I really asking for it.
Call the meeting to order, please rise for the class.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
Approval of board meeting minutes for September twenty fifth, twenty twenty four.
I'll move for the approval of board meeting minutes for September twenty fifth, twenty twenty four.
Then a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of meeting agenda.
I'm moving for the approval of the meeting agenda.
Second.
There has been a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion?
Are there any changes?
Such changes. Benefit of a special board meeting as we're not allowed to have changes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion items, we have the CTE, AL, oh, didn't I miss the consent agenda, all in. All right. Thank you, consent agenda.
I'll move for the approval of the consent agenda, so.
It's been a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, discussion items, CTE and AL discussion presenter, Ms. Kristy Cook.
I mostly, I just wanted to just share with you, if you think that we're working towards this school year with ALD, ALA is taking in ASU, East Grace Harbor High School did more than traditional alternative education program, Open Doors, which is for sixteen year olds and older with better credit efficient, and our works from Sky Academy. Just going through the programs, I'm new to this, this role, so it's, it's been quite the learning curve, but it's really an opportunity for us to reevaluate and relook at how do we provide various opportunities for our students so that they can be successful and have gainful employment for the future for their careers. And so I just have a few things that I was gonna just share with you. One, looking at our open doors. East Grace Harbor traditional, really working towards that mastery based credit that has, that means proficiency with the accountability and having artifacts that, that support that, and then also review the opportunity for other grade, grade levels as we look into future years for this program. Open doors, we, you're gonna be looking, you looked at a plan of improvement, excuse me, a school improvement plan for open doors program that we are needing to do because we're tier three plus, and that's based on our graduation rate, but I think there's a lot of opportunities that we can do that will really focus on GED attainment, which will help towards that gainfulness to the high school diploma because it half serves as credits. And then that way, if they don't succeed with having the high school diploma, they still at least have a tangible GED, so the focus would be there, and then work towards the additional credits and requirements that State of Washington requires for diploma. Also, really connect to the workforce, we're gonna be more intentional this year, really trying to work with workforce development, looking at pre-apprenticeships and internships, obviously this is gonna be developing, but hoping our students are getting, are not just in a job, but we're really training them towards a career that, again, gainful employment. And then we also will be applying for the OSSI grant with this, with intentions of transportation and other supports to help facilitate the open doors as we're in that, that tier three plus program. Additionally, then we have ESVA, which is our online program where we do serve grades kindergarten through twelfth grade, we have full time and part time students, so we, we did, we're adjusting that so that we have some dual enrollment with the high school and or middle school, nothing that's dual enrolled with the elementary. Kindergarten, after researching that and working with a few people here, Jen and Mark Keating, right now, if we accept kindergartners, it will only be for half day because of the kids assessment that is really difficult to do online. Our ASU, working on reviewing courses available to students, is streamlining that a little bit, and then I'll also evaluate how to improve efficiency and effectiveness for students in school districts so that we are fiscally sound, but also providing valuable opportunities for students. And then we're gonna work on creating career pathways and an AA option, so this associated the degree for associate's degree, figuring out how, how can we create that, just like we do in Running Start, but still meet all the Washington State high school requirements? And then also looking at career pathways, we were looking at computer science, we're finding that there might be a boundary that ASU put on that, that this year is that they don't allow kids that are under eighteen to take those classes right now, so we have to look at some of those things. Next, we're gonna be looking at CTE and Innovation Academy, the Innovation Academy is going well this year, right now we have twenty six students in manufacturing and natural resources, almost all of them are full time. We did get the fire science cadet program going with East Grace Harbor Fire and Rescue, we have eleven students there, and we do have a mix of females in these male dominated fields, but not maybe as many as we'd like, but we're really, we're pretty happy with, with what we have. We're, we are working with Summit Pacific and Board of Nursing to apply to be one of the two test pilot schools to offer a CNA program as we start our health science career pathway for twenty twenty five, twenty six. We're hoping to get a soft start this spring with the CNA program, kinda like what we did with the apprenticeships, we started that early and then worked it into the Innovation Academy as we grew our younger kids. And then adding an education career pathway also, we are working with Make It A Maker Space up on second floor, very exciting, adding it when we have three D printers and different options for students, not only just with CTE, but also basic ed, and working on co-mingling, working with basic ed and CTE for consumable products, and we're providing kind of those passion project ideas for teachers to come in and use that space. That is similar to our foods lab that we've always allowed other teachers, both middle school and high school use, Major Space will be mostly, will be high school. And then just, we're just working on trying to continue our great programs and student leadership opportunities. You know, sometimes we almost get too many different directions, so we gotta make sure that we're still supporting the, the good stuff we're doing too. And then last CCR, you, as you know, that where we did, we were awarded the Gear Up Grant seven years in the making, that we will have this through September twenty thirty one is what we heard today, it's like, that kinda just like, was kinda crazy to me, you know, thinking of Michael's kids going through school. So anyway, that's gonna be there, and we're gonna be, the focus of this is post-secondary development of readiness, readiness and entrance for grades seven through twelve, essentially what it is, is to really work on having our students realize that the, all the post-secondary options that there are. So we'll be able to, this is extra money to wrap around those supports, and we'll be hiring people for those positions that will be on a seven year, year grant. We're also really intentional this year with Eagle Time in high school and beyond with our school links. We are actually using our live days for secondary education to train our staff, our, in high school and beyond plan, college entrance and programs, we just had Grace Harbor College in Long Gap present to six through seven, twelfth grade teachers about these program, all programs. Financial assistance is, we're gonna have LAASAC come in, we'll also look at high school graduation requirements, military apprenticeship, the goal is, is that our counselors are tapped and they can't do all this, but if we can empower our teachers with this knowledge, then that can then facilitate and trickle into our students, and then, then that way the students could start asking some very intentional questions, and then we can figure out ways to get supports there, which then loops back up to our Gear Up Grant, and how that is just part of our whole mission and vision and cycle of what we're doing. We're also pursuing a financial literacy grant, this is really for staff training, again, if we can train our staff, and this is actually for pre-K through twelve, that if we can train our staff about this, then, you know, these are some good, good moments, learning moments for all ages of kids, of how do you budget your allowances and those kinds of things. We still maintain our limitless partnership, which again is really working towards post-secondary options and making more of a fluid transition, whether it's technical college, community college, or university, and then HTP is our high school to post-secondary partnership, you can see that the whole CCR has basically is very intertwined with everything that we want for our career and college readiness. So those are some of the things we're doing.
So the one question when you're presenting on ALA part of it, and you kinda touched about our counselors, so since there's all these different requirements and we're kinda spreading ourselves wide, how, who is managing all those different programs, I mean, is our, because before we had two counselors and all they had to focus on was high school, general ed, high school, but now with all the apprenticeships and, you know, open doors and all these other programs, how, who and how are they staying on top of that, make sure that, hey, kids are getting what they're supposed to get, and kids are not slipping through the cracks?
That's an excellent question, and I don't have a solid bulletproof answer, because it's definitely a work in progress, yes, the council, the goal this year is we were finding that we had a lot of gaps in the previous years, and the goal this year was because of different options with ASU, ESVA, and our alternative with Open Doors and East Grace Harbor, we needed the counselors to see every student, so the goal right now is that every, every student is, is having an education plan that counselors are involved with. We haven't had that before, even at the elementary, if we have some elementary students that are choosing ESVA, we're working with the counselor at the elementary level to say, yes, this, we recommend this, this is the best course of action, sometimes counselors may not recommend it, but parents will write that, we put that in there, but that's documentation for that too.
Part of the major reason we put Kristy in charge of all of these programs right now, with technology, that she's pretty spread thin, is to evaluate where everything is fitting into the major ecosystem of the district. Our priority for a very long time was to keep a very high grad rate, to be successful about it, about ninety three, ninety four percent grad rate, but it came with the fact that we also had a fourteen percent four year university, twenty percent two year, you know, community college going rate, and we realized that with a really high post, you know, grad rate, with a low post-secondary going rate, and a really high youth unemployment rate, so not working, we really needed to reevaluate, look at was our overall goal. So we went through last three years, looking at how are we building the post-secondary going nature of our district and setting our students up for success, this year Kristy's going through with that career and college readiness mindset, that career readiness goal on, in an open doors program, and Eric, do you mind pulling up the slide real quick? On the open door slide, Kristy's slide. On, like an open doors program should have a workforce training component, right? When you're running through open doors, you're, you're showing that students are preparing, pursuing a GED, but do we have a job training aspect with it to help retain high level careers? So Kristy's been going through, so how are we actually doing this? We have the open doors program, we're meeting the actual requirements, we have an ALA program. ALA is not independent of the high school, we currently ran it independently, where you would go to the ALA, East Grace Harbor High School ALA, and I don't think even our community understanding convention, we have a few of East Grace Harbor High Schools in our district. We have East Grace Harbor High School ALA, and then if you turn sixteen and you're not credit deficient to not meet graduation, you would roll into East Grace Harbor High School Open Doors. I think most of our community just thinks we have one East Grace Harbor High School, we don't, we actually have two high schools in our district named East Grace Harbor High School. But you can't cross enroll ALA with Open Doors, but ALA can be cross enrolled with Gen Ed, based upon how you're trying to show that you're having a unique way of meeting an English credit and math credit, the science credit. So having ALA disconnected as a pipeline into Open Doors, when you cross the reference, the FTE, when it's not fully understood that we have two East Grace Harbor High Schools, we felt that the best course of action is to kind of, let's look at the whole ALA and Open Doors program, and how does it fit into the post-secondary readiness plan? So there's some flavors of that conversation here, but this is what's under, Kristy's answer is representative of the massive undertaking she's taking on to ensure are we upholding our board, our commitment to the community that every graduate of Elma School District, our school district, we can say is prepared for post-secondary and career success.
Right, and that, you know, and I just wanted to ensure that, you know, that with our counselors, because before our counselors were Gen Ed or, and CTE in there, but, you know, I wanna make sure that the kids that are over here, either in our traditional ALA or our open doors, or the Beagle Sky, you know, that somebody is being, you know, responsible to ensure that they're getting the credits they need in order to accomplish whatever level of
Yes, and, and that
route they're going.
Yes, and so, I mean, the counselors, the goal is, is that every student, the counselor has, is, is reviewing and looking at their learning plan, also when we look at the high schools, all students, whether the Running Start, Virtual Sky Academy, ALA, Open Doors, they're also, they are having a high school and beyond plan that's going to be facilitated, again, we're very, we're seeing some of our gaps, and we're fixing on closing those and being very intentional, and so we've assigned different staff members to oversee that. Also, then go back to where, you know, how it was with Eagle Time, but we're bringing in training to our, all of our secondary staff so that they're toolled up to understand high school graduation requirements, college requirements, so that they can at least, they're not gonna have all the answers, but at least they can be the first entry to help students see that and figure it, and so if we can build that out, the goal is, is then hopefully the counselors then can just nurture and put everything in place, but right now they're having to do like everything, and, and so we gotta figure out a better, a better way to say, many youngs make light work, and when we're all invested with the kids, we're gonna be able to wrap around all services with them. That also then brings up the Gear Up Grant, which is timely for us, because we will be able to, right now, the goal is to hire for sure two advisors, advisors that would be part of going in and working through seventh through twelfth grade, whether that's promoting like tours, programs, that's one-on-one conversations with the kids, working with FAFSA and WAFSA, completion, I mean, all kinds of things that we can be very creative to support our students in their journey, whether they're in ESVA, ALA, whatever, the goal is, is that we serve all kids, and we just have options for all kids.
So, so let's assume that the counselors have touched every, every student's plan, how often are those students really, is it embedded with them, like how often they should be checking in and seeing where they are, how, who, who initiates that?
Then the next step would be is, are the teachers, like, he is the, right now, that is Tim Lizell, so Tim Lizell is constantly monitoring all of those courses, whatever grade level, also in ASU he does that, so he's constantly in that check, and so him and I have that loop of conversation, we bring in counselors if we need to, those types of things. With our ALA and Open Doors, we're having those conversations with those, with the teachers there, as they review their learning plans and making sure they're staying on track, are they satisfactory, unsatisfactory, are there some other services that we need to do, and we need to bring in parents and have those conversations, and then potentially bringing in our counselors again to see, is this really the best, best plan working?
So the students know, you know, I'm Running Start, and every Friday when I'm done with Running Start, or, you know, twice a month, I check in with a specific teacher that's, you know, if that
That's what they call, they're on track to do that, yes.
Okay.
They are currently, it's all ran by individual, by plan. They are currently, it's all ran by individual parent plan contracts by the teacher. And one of the issues Christie wants to work on is shoring up, because it works well when you're in ASU. And it works well if you're in ALE, or it's well if you're in Open Doors, because it's all kind of contained. But we're starting to have students that are not so contained. So Ryan's question is a valid question. I think my answer to Ryan was, is I don't have a great answer for you, because that's what Christie's reevaluating on how everything comes back together. And I think my, 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 my response would be, would you like Christie to come back and kind of show what she's found and how she worked through these problems? Because she's only about six weeks into kind of going through these programs as in their current existence. And I think those are some of the issues we're saying. If you're in an Open Doors program and it's self-contained, it's really easy. There's not a lot of cross counseling that's needed. But that's not where our system is existing and gonna continue to exist. So she's still in the fact finding stages. But definitely, I think it would be interesting coming back in the spring on, this is what we found and this is what we need to do.
Yeah, because I also, curious, because we have created a lot of new programs and new options for students. And we should start to see some data to. To look at whether it's making a difference or not, or if we need to go a different direction. You know, so that's kind of where we're at. We've been in this. Starting, building phase, whatever you want to call it. And now we're implementing it, and so we need to really look at. Is this the direction that we need to go as a district and, and is it, is it making a difference in our students, so?
Agree, and the thing is, is even in the implementation stage, it's really hard to grab that data yet. Because you still have to go through some years, unfortunately, in order to grab some of that too.
Right.
And the other thing is like, you know, later on in the agenda, you're gonna be approving different grants that we're writing. And the grants right now, except for Gear Up, is they're not going for personnel, it's going for tangible things, we say, to make things. And that, and we have to do it that way because it's hard to hire people on grants because that is not sustainable.
Right.
I wish I could fix that, but you know, hopefully if I, we can figure out ways to get grants that maybe can offset when we spend our monies, you know, you know. Adjust our monies, maybe we can also see where can we facilitate or offer more support services and reference services.
I also think it offers you, this offers you some flexibility when you're building these systems or tweaking these systems to do, I'll make up a word, like micro pivot. If you will, right? Like after working, because they might not be big moves you have to make, but little ones that you're finding. So I think, you know, you never know what the day will bring, so I appreciate the work.
And I think also that Gear Up Grant, she said it very timely, because it's gonna put. At least two certificated in the classified staff member, that's another point of contact for kids. They'll be advising on college and career readiness, so that'll be another, and they're big on making sure that families are engaged in that process. As well as, they want, they want us to hire only people who are relationship builders. That's basically what they said. They'd rather we didn't hire, we didn't have a good pool of candidates or good candidates that could do that, to be that point of contact for kids, so.
Great, thank you. Okay, anybody else have any other questions or comments? Right, we will move to policy forty sixty, distribution of materials.
I think we were tabled on processes and things that we would like to engage in. We're gonna get there's lots of recommendation updates, as far as discussion, I'm just looking for feedback.
Yeah, I kind of went back through. So kind of walk me through more the procedure, like, so when, once we update policy, does the procedure update? Because I noticed a lot of districts where the policy's updated, but the procedure's still since like eighty-nine.
We've been pretty good at staying on top of, when we update the policy, we update the procedure. So last year, following board policy updates, we did procedural updates.
Okay, because there's quite a bit in the procedure itself that actually falls flat compared to. Other policy, just verbiage is in itself, and I have some suggestions that I can pass on to. I know that's not necessarily our thing, but it passes along through to me, but.
We, we can take that, because we haven't looked, we were waiting to adopt the policy and then once the policy's adopted. We generally go back and review our procedure against the WASTAS sample procedure.
Okay.
And that's our time to put our, our input.
Okay, that's what I figured, I, I just, last time I didn't come as prepared as I would like. And then as far as distribution of materials, how do we go about taking it and improving that as it is now? I know how it says we do it, but are we doing it as we say we're doing it? And I know that's a loaded question and I apologize for that.
It's generally handed by the buildings, so I would have to, you know, generally flyers come in through the building, they're reviewed, stamped. And after they're stamped, it'll be distributed.
And the, because in our procedure, it says that each. I guess each material is distributed, should have, the district does not sponsor or endorse the event information, is that usually on there?
That's the stamp.
That is, that is the stamp, I figured.
Sorry, I should, and traditionally, we work really hard to try to support the little. Program. Most of our players are.
I just noticed some of the districts have moved to like an online approval thing. And it's like, really, their policy is like only a couple of lines and it says, submit your policy to such and such whatever for approval. So I didn't know if we.
We had a peach jar running for a while, which worked for outside agencies. But it was really leaving out our youth, our, our alma youth programs. So we were pulling in, which had like Seattle foundations would be pushing out on peach jar, but then it left out.
Everybody else.
Our, our local.
Just because it's not designed to have that, those local entities in there, or what?
No, because our local entities would go out, they'd make a big stack of copies. Everything ready to go, and then they brought it in and the interest of maintaining a good rapport with our local community.
Sure.
Generally, the conversation was coming on the heels of, well, I just made a thousand copies.
Yes.
Yeah, that. No, I, I have, no, I don't have anything else on forty sixty. Okay. Moving forward. And then I can pass the procedures that along. So.
Does anybody have any other discussion? Nobody said anything? Is it a resounding silent now? Okay.
We, we are just looking for feedback.
No, not vote, I'm just, just asking if anybody's got anything else to say. I'm moving on. Okay, I'm gonna be quicker next time. Policy forty-one ten, citizen advisory committee and task forces.
So that's the one I was talking about, the open, OPMA.
Yes.
Most districts cover it in the procedures. Which if we, once we do this and we update the procedures, which this is the one I was talking about, that actually hasn't been updated in a really long time. Because one of the RCWs doesn't think, doesn't even exist anymore. So, yeah, and then there's an added RCW for the updated procedures, so I can pass that along. I'm sure it's on WASTAS.
Yeah.
But other than that, I don't have anything on the policy.
It's only reviewed nineteen years ago.
But it's a lot of the will, like legally, I guess we changed from shell.
Sure. Okay, anyone else? Okay, policy forty-one twenty, school support organizations.
I think I will, those papers, because I'm gonna be slower getting uploaded on my computer.
I couldn't do this, I couldn't compare them efficiently, the way that I wanted to. Same thing's true for forty-one twenty, mostly it's the procedure. There's RCWs, I'm not one of that are also. Out and there's new RCWs that supported the procedure, but the policy itself seems like it's on point with most.
And there's no.
Every other small district.
Language update, it's just an RCW reference update.
Mostly in the procedures, it has to do with the whole bingo raffle stuff, and there's a big paragraph about. How many you can have, what you can, and then there's some added nonprofit organization RCW on there too. So.
Good break. I think this can probably, there's no other further comment, can just move the first reading forward to the next booking.
Perfect. Thank you. Public comment, no public comment? Unfinished business, we don't have any, I suppose, new business, so we'll have, we have. Michael, did you wanna?
Oh, I don't, earlier, yeah, that was for earlier. I was looking at something else. I think these we might have too.
Okay, oh, these are, these are different, these are not, okay. Approval of volleyball booster fundraiser. I don't know if we have somebody here tonight.
I'll move with approval of volleyball booster fundraiser.
An emotion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the East Grace Harbor High School Open Doors School Improvement Plan?
I'll move to approve the East Grace Harbor High School Open Doors School Improvement Plan.
All second. There's been a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the CTE district-wide plan for twenty-four through twenty-eight?
I'll move with the approval of Alma CTE district-wide plan for twenty-four to twenty-eight.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the Alma CTE grant pursuit for twenty-four to twenty-five?
I'll move for the approval of the Alma CTE grant pursuit for twenty-four, twenty-five.
All second.
There's been a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the ALE grant pursuit twenty-four, twenty-five?
I'll move for the approval of the ALE grant pursuit twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five.
All second.
There's been a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion?
I just wanna say, for all of those, it's a lot of work. And they all, you know, we're going to see four lines of text and there, there are pages after pages of very professionally put together. I'm gonna say easy to read because they're well organized, but there is a lot of work behind all of this, and I just want to say thank you.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Reports, superintendent report.
Well, this is homecoming week. So today, actually, Ms. Holm, our high school principal, took me on tour around the high school to go see how our students have gotten ready for homecoming. So it's great experience, I would say the students were really pulled together. Also, we stopped by a bunch of classrooms and I just want to add, I was really impressed with our learning walk today at the high school. I think every classroom we walked through, teachers walking around, working with students, student engagement was high. Students were all working through the different learning activities. Teachers were walking around, helping students out as they're working through those learning activities. So I gotta say, it's probably one of my best learning walks I've had, just with our high school principal, myself, that I've had for the high school. On a, just a school spirit around for the week of homecoming. And the, and the engagement in the classroom. So I just think the high school just deserves a really good, positive shout out. Tomorrow's the parade. Friday, we have our homecoming game and Saturday is the dance. So we are excited about, and there is a three-day weekend on Friday, so we will have a homecoming game with no school on Friday. So we just have a pretty exciting weekend.
Okay, exciting news to hear about the high school. It makes me happy and I know that those walks were exceptionally good.
Yes.
Okay, with that being said.
Make motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Then a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anything adjourned?